Welcome to everybody. This is the February 3 Public Planning Committee's special meeting. Teresa, have we complied with FOIA?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And please call the role, Teresa.
Ms. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here. And is there a motion to approve the today's agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you very much, although in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. Teresa, is that adequate, or do you want to take the role on that one?
Preferably the role.
Okay, call the role, please.
Thank you. Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Approve.
Mr. Stanford?
Approve.
Mr. Ames?
Yep, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have two sets of minutes. But before we start, what struck me as I reread these minutes was the name of Scott Liggett. I consider Scott a personal friend and a very admired professional associate. But it dawned on me that he's made such a contribution to the island over 30 years that, in a sense, it's really a personal loss for all of us. And so I just wanted to add my admiration and respect for someone who has contributed so much to this island and did it professionally. He definitely had an engineer's mind. He could eloquently express himself, putting paragraphs together when I struggle to put a sentence together. So I think that the challenge we have as a community going forward is not only to remember what he's done, but also try to perpetuate the greatest contributions he made to the Is there a motion to accept the minutes of October 29, 2020?
I'll make that motion, but I also, before we move forward, want to, with the most heavy heart, express what you so eloquently just said.
We, oh, there you are.
It's fading in and out, not sure why. In that bad timing, but at least it gave me a moment to catch my breath. Scott will be dearly missed by all of us.
You're going in and out again, Tammy. All right, let's, let's do this while Tammy's having difficulty. Let's consider making a motion to approve both sets of minutes for November 29, I beg your pardon, October 29 and November 19 together. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Is there a second?
I will second, Mr. Chairman, but I will also abstain from the voting.
Tammy, we have a motion to approve. Alex has seconded, but he has to abstain from one motion. Would you like to make the second to the motion to approve both sets of minutes? Hearing that we still have a problem with Tammy's transmission, will you call the role, please, Teresa?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stanford?
Yes, for the motion.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, for the motion.
Mr. Brown?
I will abstain.
Yes, sir. And Ms. Becker, we appear to have lost.
David, why don't we ask her to call in on her phone rather than trying to do it over the Internet?
The staff will call Ms. Becker.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Teresa, appearance by citizens, what do we have?
Mr. Chairman, public comments concerning agenda items were submitted electronically via the open town hall portal. Those comments were provided to the committee for review and made part of the official record. In addition to commenting on the portal, citizens were provided the opportunity to call into the meeting to give public comments. At this time, we have nine callers who signed up to speak to give comments during the sea turtle protection ordinance revisions.
All right, thank you very much. We do have that unfinished business regarding the review and recommendations on the sea turtle protection ordinance revisions. Ann, would you like to make a presentation, please?
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Ann Siren, Senior Planner for the town. Since we've been working on this issue for some time, and since Mr. Brown has just joined the committee, I'd like to provide a brief history of the proposed changes to the ordinance so far, and then describe the changes made to the ordinance since you last reviewed it. I'll also present some additional minor changes to the ordinance that aren't shown in the materials that you received in the packet. After I present, Diane Bush, who's the town's new staff attorney, would like to provide some information to you, an insight into the town's enforcement policies, which the committee had requested the last time you reviewed the proposed ordinance. Okay. We'll start with some background information. So the slide is not advancing. There we go, okay. This process began in January 2019, when the committee asked staff to discuss the turtle patrol's concerns about the existing ordinance, which we've had in place since 1990. The turtle patrol specifically was concerned that sea turtle hatchling success was failing. From 2014 to 2018, their success rate dropped from 62% to 48%. The turtle patrol determined a number of factors contributed to the hatchlings' reduced success. Some of these factors are beyond our control, such as temperature changes and storms, but there are several factors within our control. Those include holes in the sand, personal property left on the beach, and of course, artificial lighting. So in reviewing the existing ordinance and the changes in technology and in ordinances that have occurred since the original ordinance was passed in 1990, staff proposed revisions to that ordinance. Those proposed revisions have been discussed in many committee meetings and meetings with neighborhood groups, interest groups such as the Realtors and Home Builders Association, the Turtle Patrol, and with interested individuals. So we've had many meetings to discuss the proposed changes. Since, since you've last reviewed the ordinance in November, we made the following changes. First, I'll review the major changes, and then if you have any other questions, please feel free to ask. We added whereas statements supporting the ordinance. These were proposed by Curtis Coltrane, and they provide evidence for, for the proposed changes, and they support the idea of sea turtles nesting on the beaches being endangered species and requiring protection from artificial light. Second, the definition of shield was revised to specify that lampshades are acceptable shields for indoor light fixtures. That wasn't explicitly stated in the ordinance before, now the ordinance specifically states that if you have indoor artificial lights, any kind of standard lampshade that obscures the view of the light bulb is an acceptable shield and is in compliance with the ordinance. Third, and this was specifically at the request of the committee, again, for existing structures, new windows only have to be tinted if more than half of the windows on that building that are visible from the beach are being replaced. So if you're replacing one or two windows on a structure, you would not have to tint them on an existing structure. And fourth, we added a definition of ambient light. The ordinance previously stated that light bulbs had to be shielded, but it didn't specifically state that ambient light visible from properly shielded light fixtures was permitted. The ordinance now clearly states that ambient light that is visible from the beach is not prohibited, as long as it comes from a properly shielded light fixture. Staff proposes two additional minor changes to the ordinance that are not reflected in the packet that you received. We received some feedback from Amber Kuhn with Turtle Patrol, and she had a couple of suggested changes. We reviewed those with Curtis Coltrane, and he agreed that we could add those changes to the ordinance, so I'm going to present those to you. The first is that the list of turtles that nest on Hilton Head Island's beaches did not include green turtles. Green turtles do nest on the beaches, and so we want to make sure that that's reflected in the ordinance. The change to the ordinance would look like this, where the type in red would be added to the ordinance. This doesn't reflect every instance where it would be added, but it gives you an example. The second change is that the current definition of shield, the type in red there, whether or not made of opaque material, makes it sound like if you perhaps had a clear glass globe on a light fixture, that that could be compliant, that that would be a compliant shield. We want to clarify that clear glass is not considered a, an appropriate shield. So we're proposing this change to the ordinance. You can see her in red, that type would change to, so that it is not directly visible. And that change was proposed by Curtis to ensure that shields should shield the view of the bulb from the viewer. So our recommendation is that the committee recommend approval of the proposed ordinance with the addition of references to green sea turtles and the revision of the definition of shield. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, and once, once you're ready, staff attorney Diane Bush is prepared to answer your questions about the town's enforcement policies.
Do any members of the committee have a question of Ann at this time? Hearing none, why doesn't Dan, Diane, give her? Curtis, are you?
Yeah, the, the, the last text that Ann put up relating to the definition of the lampshade was not the last version of that. It, it's, the, the text was more extensive than that one.
Do you have a, can you put it on your screen?
You know what, I bet I can, wait a minute, let's see. I mean, I mean, it's the same idea, but let me, let me make this so it takes up one screen, come on. There we go. All right, wait a minute. Oh, shoot. All right, let's see. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the, 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 the definition was a little more extensive than that which had, that, that was in, I mean, that thing went back and forth a couple of times yesterday, and I think this was the last version of it.
Okay, I understand that. Any member of committee want to make a comment about that? Hearing none, let's talk about enforcement.
Oops. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Diane Bush here. I can give you an overview of enforcement options, or I'm available for questions, however, however you'd prefer to proceed.
Well, I think the, the central issue is criminal versus civil citations. Can you address the two, please?
A, whoops, sorry. The distinction, all cases pretty much have got to fall in, into one or the other category. Typically, civil is, is an individual pursuing another individual for a dispute that can't be resolved, which actually, I, I suppose the town could, could take that route in, in some instances. It would be cost prohibitive, and time certainly would be an issue if, if the town were to pursue any, anybody civilly in that manner. But the, the, the big distinction is that unless you've got something to stand behind your citation, whether it's a, if it is a civil citation or criminal, you don't have any way to enforce it. So if, for example, you were to rewrite the, the enforcement provision and attach it to, or even include in this ordinance its own civil penalties, what you'd be talking about probably would be a fine only, and the, the issue is, there's no way to collect it. Curtis, yesterday, when we were going back and forth, I think, called it a toothless tiger.
Diane, it was my understanding from Curtis that the enforcement of any ordinance must be criminal. I'm not sure...
Not necessarily. Curtis, you can jump in, but I, I, I think you could, like a parking ticket, that doesn't have any, doesn't have any criminal liability attached to it. It's, it's, or maybe they, they, the best definition would be quasi-civil for, for those...
Where I'm coming from on this is that we're a hospitality community. To the degree that a civil citation had some teeth and we could enforce it, then I think that would be preferable. But based on my conversations with Curtis, we don't really have that choice because this is an ordinance-related enforcement. And so I, I, I'd like to make sure that we are clear on where we're ending up here.
Well, if I can follow up on Diane for a second, I mean, you know, you can write this as a, as a civil citation. That doesn't prevent you from having to, you know, go to court and prove the case, and then you wind up with a civil fine, which you then, there are, are methods you can use to collect that, but there, again, is somewhat additional work that you have to do. In the, the, while code violations that are enforced by the town now, you know, zoning code violations and things of that nature, I mean, yes, it is a criminal violation. I mean, it is not one that, you know, affects anybody's civil rights or anything like that. At the end of the day, you still pay a fine. But, you know, what happens at the magistrate's court is, is at the end of the case, you know, you go out in the hall and you pay the fine. The, the creation of a civil citation, to me, the message there is, is that it's, you know, less, less serious, and, and two, it's, it's, it's more difficult to enforce.
Okay. Glenn, do you have thoughts?
My, my, my concern about switching to a civil manner of enforcement is, in my experience, you, what you end up doing is hiring out a third party to collect, because the, 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 you, you don't have anything to hold over anybody. In other words, there's no, even if they don't come to court, if they don't come to court, there's, I, I don't see any recourse that, that a judge would have, because it's civil. Maybe, maybe a contempt power, but you, you can't attach it to a lien, you can't attach it to, may, maybe you could if they had an income tax return in South Carolina, maybe you could grab that, but...
I, I don't, I don't want to over, overthink this. I'd like to keep it as simple as possible. I had come to the conclusion, based on my conversations with Curtis, that our cleanest route was to go to the criminal citation, but I'd be interested in hearing whether or not the other members of council agree with that direction. All right, committee, agree with that. Glenn?
Yes, thank you. I think of civil penalties as more in the nature of damages that are awarded as a result of a civil wrong, as distinguished from violation of an ordinance. I think we're going down the wrong road to try to make it into a civil penalty. As a matter of fact, the fact that it is treated as a criminal penalty, it still just gets down to dollars and cents, but it's more practical to enforce. So I think it should be left as is.
All right. Alex, do you have a comment?
All above my pay grade, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to yield to our council for my decision on this one.
You're such a wise man. Is Tammy on board?
So I've changed locations, and hopefully this, this...
There you are.
Yeah, hopefully the signal stays strong here. Um, yeah, in terms of enforcement, I'm not sure this is what I had in, rolling around my head. It was really more a question of identifying when there's an infraction and how that takes place. So that's, that's really been my focus. If this, in terms of how the penalties work out, whether civil or criminal, are in line with what our legal representation believes to be the best course, then I'm fine with that. Still interested in really more in how an infraction is identified and then handled from that point and proven, you know, we get to the point of a penalty.
Yep, yep. Clearly, that's a big part of it. I think that this is a three-legged stool. One is the ordinance, two is education, and three is the common sense enforcement, so good.
Don't do that, yeah.
So, all right, so I, I hear a consensus here that we will go as recommended by Curtis and Diane and go with a criminal offense citation. Is that correct, Ed Knotts? Okay, thank you very much. All right, Diane, appreciate your comments on that. All right, general comments on the ordinance from the committee? We will hear from the public subsequently, so you can wait to make your comments until afterwards, or you can make preliminary comments now. Alex, anything now? Okay. Tamara, anything now?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, Glenn?
Yes, I think it should be emphasized that if there is a positive vote on this proposed ordinance today, the ordinance is not then adopted. Rather, all we would be doing would be moving it forward to the full council for debate and adoption. Other than that, I'm comfortable with the ordinance as is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to make as a general comment. This has been a lengthy process, in some cases frustrating for members of the public as well as the committee, and I'm sure the staff. But I would like to thank the community participants, because they really have had an impact on where we ended up. Maybe it was a somewhat messy route to get here, but Amber, Howard Ackerman, Al Emanueli, Turtle Trackers, Realtors, Builders Association, all played a role in where we ended up. And so I think it's important for us to say thank you very much. It was an example of influencing public policy through public involvement. Thank you. Teresa, let's take public comment at this time.
Yes, sir. First, we have Ms. Amber Kuhn.
And we're limiting this to three minutes apiece, is that correct?
I got my timer started. Good morning, everyone, for the record. Amber Kuhn, Sea Turtle Patrol, Hilton Head Island Manager. In light of what transpired yesterday, this subject is too relevant, so I'm going to read this in order to get through it, and I'll try not to sound like Skip. Over the past two years, I have given you scientific evidence regarding sea turtle hatchlings and sea finding. It is not a theory that sea turtle hatchlings use visual cues to find the ocean, and in the dark, the only visual cue depends on the brightest light. Any documents that state artificial light may cause misorientation are out of date. I am personally offended by the suggestion at the last meeting for an alternative expert opinion, which I have offered, the statements of the foremost authorities on this subject, federal technical reports, collaborations between sea turtle conservation agencies and lawyers, in addition to my 22 years of experience. You will not hear what you want to hear, because you cannot manipulate scientific facts. The same federal government that upholds the Constitution mandates the Endangered Species Act, and I'm sure you know the comment that I think is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, I'm not even going to say it, because I'm sure you know what it is. There will be interior light visible from the beach, ambient light, just as Ann said. We are simply asking beachfront homeowners to knock it down a peg. The inconvenience of drawing a curtain, adding a lampshade that's not clear, and changing a light bulb to sea turtle-friendly wavelength is apparently too much to ask for them. They would like to see the ordinance remain as written. Mr. Stanford stated that the current ordinance does a fine job of protecting the sea turtles, when it clearly does not, and I'm happy to hear him say that he accepts the changes that we've recently made, record-breaking percentages of misorientations in 2022, or in 2020. Now, there's false advertising by the chamber. They state the attention giving, given to preserving the environment here on Hilton Head Island has become the blueprint for other sustainability efforts around the country. We do not live up to that if this is rejected. It sets a precedent, and the island is leaning toward reviving that natural environment brand. So that is all I'm going to say. I think that we suffered some paralysis by analysis, but I'm hopeful that we will get past this, and it's only the first step. Thank you, guys, for listening, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Amber. Teresa?
Yes, yes, sir. Ms. Sanders, Kathy Sanders?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Kathy.
Hi, hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Kathy Sanders. I'm an island resident and a turtle tracker in the Palmetto Dunes Chapter. I'm calling in support of the revisions. As the Public Planning Committee is aware, the Turtle Trackers Organization is active on the island with an end goal in tandem with the results of your decision today. The six Turtle Tracker chapters work together for a common goal with various duties. I myself have been guiding a committee that is gathering all beachfront addresses and linking the rental properties to property management companies, so that we may, we may support Sea Turtle Patrol by providing this information. We're making it easily accessible for a friendly reminder call to all the agencies just to remind their guests that lights can negatively impact hatchling sea turtles. We have also made contact with many of those agencies to provide insight and informational tools to help them pass, pass on the information to all their guests. You may not be aware, but also, Palmetto Dunes POA is currently implementing to all their short-term policies to require signage in all the rentals, of which includes lights out. We applaud Palmetto Dunes' proactive approach in hoping to educate the visitors. You may actually find that many of the POAs are a little ahead of the time. We would like to see that your decision supports them as well. We thank you for your time, your diligence in the matter, and ask that you please vote to move forward with this revision. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next, Ms. Joanne Velelas.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Joanne.
Great, thank you, David. For the record, I am Joanne Velelas, a full-time... a full-time Hilton Head resident and coordinator of the Shipyard Turtle Trackers Chapter. I too am calling in support of the proposed revisions to our antiquated beach ordinance regarding sea turtles and lighting. Based upon the recurring issue of nest misorientations and hatchling losses, it is obvious the current ordinance is not sufficient. As an island which prides itself on the conservation of natural resources, based upon the time it has taken to approve the improved protections, it is starting to appear to me that the local government is unsupportive of these efforts, and I certainly hope that I am incorrect in that belief. By contrast, other coastal communities, Kiawah Island, for instance, has had for years an ordinance almost identical to the one that is being proposed here today. I urge the planning committee to pass this and bring it to the town council as soon as possible so that we do not head into the 2021 nesting season without an effective ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Mr. Chris Rush?
Hi, this is Chris Rush. I'm the coordinator for the North End Turtle Trackers Group and the Hilton Head residents. As you know, the Hilton Head trackers spend hundreds of hours on the beach each year repairing the damages left by visitors. And the disrespect of our beach, the residents, not to mention the turtles, is getting out of hand. We are encouraged in 2019 with the passage of the ordinance regulating holes and abandoned personal property. Despite the fact that the holes have not disappeared, we appreciate the support that we have noticed some improvement. This revision to the lighting ordinance has been sliced and diced to fit the needs of a very few beachfront residents at the expense of the nests exposed for the lights. And again, my main concern is that it's a minority, a loud voice, that's trying to sway the decision here. So I hope you support the revisions to the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Barbara Faraci?
Name is Barbara.
Why don't we come back to her, Teresa?
Yes, sir. Ms. Juliana Smith?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Juliana.
Good afternoon, planning committee members. This is Juliana Smith. I am the South Coast Project Manager for the Coastal Conservation League, and I am commenting in support of the proposed revisions of the Sea Turtle Protection Ordinance Agenda Item 7A. As you all know, for decades, Hilton Head has taken great strides to protect wildlife and has invested for years in supporting and protecting natural sea turtle nesting on the island. From urging visitors to fill in holes that can trap and kill sea turtles, to removing abandoned beach items every night to ensure a clear path for nesting mothers and hatchlings alike, it's clear that simple human adjustments play an enormous role in the continued success of these beloved species. In recent years, it's also become clear that our community can make better on its investment to protect endangered and threatened sea turtle species by strengthening our beachfront lighting rules. Just last year, nearly 40 nests that successfully hatched on Hilton Head's beach, representing between 3,000 to 4,000 sea turtle hatchlings, were completely lost because hatchlings were disoriented by human light pollution from beachfront homes and erroneously walked into the dunes instead of towards the ocean. It was the biggest loss of hatchlings as a result of light pollution in the last five years. The evidence is clear. It's time to strengthen the current Sea Turtle Protection Ordinance so that it can better protect sea turtles on Hilton Head's beach. The amendments you all have reviewed today will help solve this issue while minimizing inconvenience to beachfront homeowners. Upgrading lighting fixtures, pulling the blinds, and/or installing lighting timers are each small adjustments to make in order to nurture life on our beaches. We're grateful for the work that staff and that several of you have done over the past two years to create the proposed changes and to accommodate community input from property owners, community advocates, and expert biologists. We hope you will vote today to approve to push this ordinance over the finish line and send it to council with a recommendation to adopt. Doing so will make Hilton Head an even better place for native wildlife. I thank you for your time, your consideration, and for your leadership.
Thank you, Juliana.
Barbara Faraci? Barbara, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. My name is Barbara Faraci, for the record. I am the president of the Turtle Trackers Organization at large, and I'm a full-time Seapines resident. Our organization of Turtle Trackers was built on the premise of the subject at hand, preservation of sea turtles. There was a need for community involvement, and we have filled it as best we can. We trust that you will see our efforts and do your part to support us. This lighting ordinance revision would save more hatchlings that we can all summer filling holes and picking up litter. You can make this ordinance robust. We can only fill in the cracks. Our efforts to educate the public are nonstop, year-round mostly. We cannot, but we cannot reach every one of the millions of people that come to our island, particularly as they rotate week after week. Please give our code enforcement officers some credit and a firm foundation to stand on with some updated protections set forth in the ordinance revision so that they have the tools to warn and educate our visitors of the consequences of their actions. Can we please get this done? I am calling in support of the revisions, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Henry Sanders?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, members, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and staff. Yes, my name is Henry Sanders. I live full-time on the north end of the island at the spa in Port Royal Sound. I'm speaking today to voice my full support also for the proposed revisions to the Turtle Ordinance regarding its lighting rules for beachfront properties. The condo I live in is right on the beach, so these rules have always applied to me. It was simple and cheap for me to just install blackout blinds and fully comply with the guidelines. I'm also using lower wattage bulbs and stuff at night, and just really simple, sensible stuff. We've heard some complaints, I'm sure you all have, from beachfront homeowners that they don't want the town interfering with what they do in their own homes, and they're afraid of alleged inconvenience. Well, generally, I could care less what people do in their living rooms or elsewhere in the house for that matter. But when someone's activities in their house cause destructive effects outside their house, we have a problem, and the town can and should use its regulatory powers to mitigate the harm, which is exactly what the revisions of this ordinance will do. Last year, as has been stated, we lost nearly 4,000 baby turtles because shore-based lights disoriented them, and they died in the dunes instead of reaching the sea. Our sea turtles have been here for eons. The whole idea of Hilton Head from Charles Fraser on has been to respect our wildlife, coexist with them, and protect them. Luckily, this is not rocket science. It'll be simple, inexpensive, and easy to comply with the proposed ordinance provisions on beachfront lighting, especially for anyone who can afford to live on the beach in the first place. In the end, it's the right thing to do, the sensible thing to do, and the least that we can do. So please recommend these revisions for passage by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
Mr. Ken Campbell? Mr. Campbell, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all right. Again, my wife and I have been Hilton Head residents for a dozen years. We've had property on the island, been visiting the island for getting close to 50 years. I did submit written comments, and I won't read that because I know each committee member will be reading that separately. I began it with saying that I was in the hope and expectation of being able to support this ordinance, and the changes that have been made, I believe, are reasonable changes, and I am in support of the ordinance. I thank the committee members and chair in particular for working very diligently over the past two years to change what was a draconian ordinance to one that is workable for most, almost any reasonable resident that is within view of the beach. I had four things at the bottom that I outlined in that letter. Two of them just related, there's no real reason to differentiate between indoor and outdoor sources of lighting. I would uncomplicate the ordinance. It's a long, complicated ordinance, and I would really encourage somebody looking at with the thought that, let's get this as simple as can be. Apply the KISS theory. I don't believe there's any reason to differentiate any further between first and second floors. Ms. Kuhn was very kind to spend some time on the phone with me several weeks ago. That was very informative. The shade, now I don't know, I can't see the revision that was proposed, but as long as you can use a normal shade indoors or outdoors on a light so you can't see the light source, I think that's absolutely fine. I did mention, because it is somewhat of a factor to some people, the television screens should probably be mentioned in the ordinance. With those thoughts in mind, I'd like to make sure you consider those before you pass a final ordinance on to council. But with those in mind and what I've heard today, we certainly can support this, and I would be active in encouraging my neighbors and friends who have been very concerned about this to also. It's changed from a draconian ordinance that was drafted by staff two years ago to a very workable one today, and I congratulate everybody for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate that. All right. Staff has recommended approval with additions of references to green sea turtles, a revision to the definition of shield as presented by Curtis. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I would move that we amend the previous draft of the ordinance to include those two proposed changes.
Thank you. And Tamara will second. I appreciate that. Any further discussion by committee members?
I just want to take a second and thank all those people who called in. This has been a long process, and as you said, David, I think the best thing that has come from it is all of the various input and considerations that hopefully has brought us to a place that is a very workable ordinance that will do the job that it's intended to do to help our sea turtles, green turtles, and the like to continue their life with us here on Hilton Head.
Thank you, Tamara. Glenn or Alex?
I want to comment that I sincerely appreciate the citizens who are so involved in protecting the sea turtles and the willingness to listen to the changes, to understand the pressures that we're under. And now I am convinced that we have come up with a reasonable protection for the sea turtle, and I intend to continue to support that because I've always supported the sea turtles as a vital part of our community. Many thanks to the Turtle Trackers, and to you, Amber, especially.
Thank you, Glenn. Hey, Alex, is this one above your pay grade, too?
Yeah, man, job well done by a lot of good people. I'm ready to move on.
Okay, let me just.
David, I think we need to vote on that motion.
I know, I know. I'm not, I'm going to make a comment. I said earlier that it's a three-legged stool and that the public has been very helpful in reinforcing that first leg. I think if I might, challenge the Turtle Trackers and perhaps Barbara as an overall chairman of the group to, in a single document, not disparate thoughts by many, but consolidated recommendations on how Turtle Trackers think that we ought to be educating our public to be more in line and sympathetic to the ordinances that we just are about to pass. And then, secondly, I said the third leg of the stool was enforcement, and Tamara brought that up again today. And I think staff should prepare for Public Planning Committee and eventually for council's hearing what an approach, an effective approach to dealing with the Turtle Ordinance in a common sense enforcement way. Thank you. I'd like to call the motion at this, call the vote at this time. Would you pull the roll call, please, Teresa?
Certainly. Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Approve.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes, for the motion.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, thank you. It passes unanimously. Job well done, committee. Thank you very much. There is no new business, but we do have a staff report.
I don't think we've had a motion to move this on to the full council. Do we need that motion?
I was making an assumption, but Glenn, you are our man in charge of making things like that happen, so would you like to make a motion?
I would move that the ordinance as amended here today be moved forward to council for consideration and adoption.
Is there a second?
I will second that. Thank you.
All right, this time I'm going to, oh, Teresa, go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Approve.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes, for the motion.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate that help. All right, update on Gullagichi overlay. Dr. Charisse Dubois?
Yes, good afternoon. This is Charisse Dubois. I'm the Historic Neighborhood Preservation Administrator for the record. Thank you for allowing me to speak today and provide an update to the Historic Neighborhoods Overlay District. Last time we met, the committee charged us with finding certain items, starting with narrowing the focus of where the district would lie. So what staff is proposing is that, yes, it will still be in the historic neighborhoods. However, to narrow the focus to 1956, because that's when the bridge would be built, this would ensure that native islanders would be included in the focus. I know that there was a concern about developers coming in and taking advantage of the setbacks, the buffers. So this would narrow that focus. Also, staff proposes to include, exclude platted subdivisions like they did for workforce housing from that focus area, as well as define family. Because what staff is also proposing is that we don't move forward with the entire district, but to focus it on family subdivision and family compound. So there would be a specific definition of family, which would include your spouse, your children legally adopted by birth, and those who are descended from a common ancestor. So this would go towards identifying the boundaries as well as identifying ownership. The committee also charged us with providing community outreach to see how family compound and family subdivision would resonate among native islanders. So we're in the process of, right now, communicating with families in terms of trying to determine whether or not this family subdivision, family compound would be beneficial to native islanders. So we are planning to do that outreach in person as well as provide something on Open Town Hall where people can make their comments. The other thing that the committee charged us with is to determine which noxious noises are acceptable. So staff is also in the process of drafting a survey to gain community responses to the question. An example of those questions would be which disturbance- An example of those, those questions would be which disturbances are you best able to tolerate? Which next door disturbances are you best able to tolerate? And choices would be common disturbances that, that are usually presented, or which disturbances are you least able to tolerate? So these would be the common choices. I would also like to add that the Gullah Task Force met on this past Monday where staff provided an update to the Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District focusing on those two areas of the subdivision and the compound moving forward and looking at the other aspects of the overlay to move forward at a later date, but to focus on those two areas. And the feedback was, from the committee was mixed. There were some who were in support of moving those two items forward, but there was also the concern that if we did not move those items all at the same time, that the overlay district, that those things would fall by the wayside and nothing would, that everything would not be able to, if they didn't move those items forward all at the same time, that they would never be moved forward. I think it is the opinion, it's actually the opinion of staff, that if we move those items forward, the family compound and the family subdivision forward, that it would be beneficial for native islanders to be able to take advantage of those, those amendments that come with it, because I do know that there are families that are asking for that to move forward. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Charisse. Questions from committee members? Alex?
Yeah, I, I guess not necessarily a question, just a, just a few comments.
No, we've lost you, Alex.
Can you hear me now? I didn't do that. Somebody else did that. I, you know, I was really pleased and, although my, my body language may not have said it, but I was very excited about us passing that turtle ordinance. We, we've been talking about that for a long time, and the, the, the native islanders of Gullah descent by no means can stretch back to the dates that the turtles first arrived here, but, but we've been here a while, right? But, but the concerted effort of, of the community that was concerned about the, the turtles' well-being, the concerted effort of turtle trackers, town staff, we got legal involved, then, you know, ultimately policymakers are put in a position where they are upholding something that may have come about from a minority, but it's going to definitely be a blessing for the majority. And I don't view this any different. So I encourage all of us, and in particular, staff, to, to, to keep moving forward so that we get to a place that we all feel good about. And, you know, Councilman Ames, you had asked about developing a community statement. Normally I can kind of see, at least I think I see where you're going, and I didn't at the moment that you mentioned that, but now I do, because I think it's important that we put that in front of everybody before we start to have any conversations about making changes to our policies so that everyone is understanding the reasoning behind this, because the, the Gullah culture and the Gullah presence on Hilton Head is endangered, and we need to recognize that. So I'm happy to hear that we are, are moving forward with engaging with, with the families. I'd encourage that we report back what, what is liked and what is not liked and make sure that we keep the task force informed. I kind of view the task force as the turtle protection group, okay? But as you noticed, there, there are definitely others in the community that have the same passion, so our continued engagement is definitely very important. And the, the only other piece that I might add is, I know that we have some metrics around, you know, the, the land ownership. I think that's important, just as Ann Siren led her conversation with, you know, some of the statistics of, of the turtles. I think that's important that we continue to put that in front of our community as a whole also. And again, the messaging is so important, the, the, the whole idea of polling the community about the, the activities. I would just ask that we frame that question a little differently, okay? Where you're not necessarily putting anyone on the defense, because I think that, we have to be careful of that, right? So, and I'm not the wordsmith, but I'm just suggesting that we ask that question very evenly so that we do have positive responses in the end goal, which is preserving the culture. And I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Tamara?
So I would be more interested in hearing some additional description with regard to the exclusion of the single family and the currently platted developments and neighborhoods, because as we know, we got to the discussion because the overlay just encompassing the entire historical neighborhoods has led us to a realization that within that overlay district, there are many already established neighborhoods and parcels that really have nothing to do with the protecting a culture and their cultural activities. And so I'd be interested in hearing more about that. I also am interested in the assurance that that home occupation piece has not been re-included into these discussions at this point.
Charisse, do you want to respond to those two items? Charisse?
I'm not sure she can hear us.
No.
Hi, Jennifer Ray, for the record. Charisse is having trouble with her connection. She got disconnected, and we can see her, but she can't hear us.
I understand.
Yeah. I can just fill in there, Ms. Becker, with your comments. We had the same thing come up as we were discussing workforce housing and the concern about existing platted and developed subdivisions, and I know that was a concern, but we still think the geography of the historic neighborhoods themselves is important for my cultural and historical reference, plus Charisse's job is based on that as a Historic Neighborhood Preservation Administrator. So what we've been trying to do to narrow the focus is find ways to filter it down smaller, so starting with the neighborhoods themselves and then taking out the platted and developed subdivisions, taking out property that wasn't owned by a family before 1956, taking out non-family members, keeps making that area smaller and smaller. So I think the intent gets back to what the task force and public planning committee's initial intent was, was to benefit the Gullah Geechee community and not everyone that happens to live within the historic neighborhoods in that part of the community.
So Jennifer, I know when we talked about this with workforce, there was a distinction made between major and minor subdivisions. Is there any distinction? Are we talking any platted subdivision or land?
We were planning at this point to use the same language that we came to agreement on with workforce, since the committee and council seemed comfortable with that, that we were proposing that first, as our first step in what we bring back to you later this month.
So I think for the benefit of others, you know, a refresher on that would be helpful.
Okay, we, we will make sure, because our plan was to bring this all back to you at your meeting on the 25th, and we'll make sure that it's clear what, exact what language we're proposing. Your other question about home occupation, that was something that staff had suggested looking at when we were working with the task force, and they suggested we take that out, and so we're still proposing to take that out. That's not part of what we're suggesting, although what Charisse was explaining about asking the community for some input got to your chairman's question at the last meeting about noxious or offensive sounds and noises. A lot of that could be from a home occupation, right? So if you did small engine repair, say, in your garage, there could be, you know, some noise. You could, if you had a garden and, you know, you had manure on the plants to help them grow, there could be a smell. You know, some, some of those things could be tied to more historical methods, and as Alex, as he's pointed out before about being, the land sustaining, the family in perpetuity, and some ways that you could use it, but we don't have a component in what we're talking about bringing forward right now about any changes to home occupation. What we're trying to do is just help narrow that list of things that our neighbors might not be comfortable with.
Okay, so that piece was not reintroduced. Thank you. I appreciate the update, and I look forward to hearing more.
Thank you, Tam. Glenn?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if you can hear us now, Dr. Dubois, but I, I wasn't quite sure what you said. It seemed to me that you were saying that you were proposing that we go forward with the family compound and with the family subdivision before we come up with the definitions of what historic families mean. Am I correct in that?
What I was proposing is that when we first drafted the Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District, we'd come up with a definition of family for then, but to narrow, for the purpose of narrowing down the focus for family compound and family subdivision, we would use that language to narrow it down. And staff is asking that we move forward with the applications for family compound, family subdivision, and then addressing the other items that went with the overlay later, such as the, the increased density, such as the, the, the decreased buffers and setbacks, those issues.
But you, we would stay with the proposed definition having to do with family ownership from 1956 and before. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, that's what I didn't understand. Thank you.
Yes.
I look forward to moving forward with this proposal.
Thank you, Glenn.
Can, can I just follow up on Glenn's question? Part, part of what that discussion or that report also had to do with ordinances that pertain to that particular aspect. And again, I would, I would ask for a refresher in terms of what those particular ordinances are, so that get grouped with that.
Thank you, Tammy. I see that Curtis and Diane are still on the call, and, and I, I'd like to raise the issue of ownership and whether that is, that idea is embedded in zoning law or precedents so that we know going forward, this is something we can depend on, because it really is one of the key foundational concepts of what we're trying to accomplish. Community outreach, Charisse, I guess we just have to see what kind of response you're getting. Oh, I see that both Curtis and Diane have popped into view. Who would like to comment on what I asked?
Bill State? I would say Curtis is your man.
I, I have to confess, I'm not entirely sure I understand what your question is.
Okay. I have been warned that ownership is not a, a, a part of ordinances, that you, you can't deal with ownership, you have to deal with use. So is the concept of ownership something we can depend on going forward?
Well, I mean, to the extent you've been told that, that the zoning code governs the use of property, that is correct. And, and for example, where this has come up around here is, is, is in the, in the context of, of, you know, timeshares. And so the, the, you know, there, there have been efforts to, to do things based on, you know, to ban interval ownership and that sort of thing, which you can't do because that addresses the ownership of the property, not the use of the property, which is, you know, multifamily. So here, we have had conversations about, and you're speaking specifically of the, of the family compound, right? And. It, it is not a, a simply answered question. I do think that in the, hang on a second, I got a door open here.
Curtis, it may not be necessary for you to try to answer that question. It was more than a hypothetical question. I just would like to have a, an assurance going forward that we're hanging our hat on a hook that's going to stay in the wall.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Community outreach, as I was about to say, I'm interested in hearing how those conversations go because I think they're important. Regarding noxious noises, a little bit of a preamble. Several years ago, Emery Campbell wrote an op-ed piece to the Island Packet, talking about two sort of legendary native islanders who were being chastised because one was feeding his hogs day-old bread, and the other was, and I've lost the, I think it was roosters, but I'm not positive. And he was reminding us of the Gullah Geechee culture and what is acceptable to native islanders, and how we who came here later have our own set of sensibilities, and that those two oftentimes were in conflict. And I don't know if you read in the newspaper, just, I guess it was on Sunday, January 31st, an article on French Roosters Now Crow With A Law Backing Them. And I, I don't know if you saw this, but what it speaks to is exactly the same thing. In France, the French government, I'm not suggesting that we should try to replicate or emulate French government, but what, what it is saying is that a culture has a lot to do with the practices within it, and in this article, it had to do with a lot of things that might fall into our noxious noises or activities. So I, I encourage anyone on the call, but certainly the members of the committee, to try to find, find that article, French Roosters Now Crow With A Law Backing Them, and read that and see if, in some ways, you agree it's a parallel situation. Charisse, I don't, I don't, my reflex is that asking those two questions won't get us very far. I think if you put a list of any number of activities in a long list, not in any order, some of them good, some of them bad, some of them to you noxious and other people okay, and ask people to rank those, I think would get a better idea of where we're headed. But the bottom line is, and I'm glad that Tammy brought this up, the bottom line is if we are trying to accommodate, respond to, be sensitive to the traditional practices of native islanders to be able to sustain themselves on their piece of property, then I think those of us who have come here over the last 50 or 60 years have to begin to expand our definition of what is noxious or collapsing, depending on how you look at it. I think of the controversy that the town has been going through with Ty Scott. And I might come to the conclusion that I'd rather have Ty Scott next door to me doing what he's doing than some other activity. So that's really what I'm trying to drive at. Is there a reasonable compromise here where we recognize practices that are historic, traditional, cultural, and the things that we who came here might see differently? So that whole number four that Charisse has presented, which noxious noises are acceptable, I think is a crux of our challenge. Because without some sort of moderation of opinions on both sides, I think we're going to have some challenges. The other thing that I'm going to add to this list, just for thought, has to do with the corridor and stony. I tried to articulate at the workshop that it's not just the two dimensional land plan that we're dealing with. In order to solve this problem, we have to think in economic terms as well. And how we as a community can create the organization, the process to facilitate economic development for the benefit of those people who we're trying to include in this effort. So I think that some kind of a nonprofit economic development effort on the part of this community begins to address the opportunities, not only in the stony area, but perhaps in other areas where native islanders have a small piece of ground. And if we can figure out the connection between that land and an economic opportunity that is more acceptable to the majority of people who came here later in life or later in the and the development of the island, then I think we're beginning to make some substantive progress. So I'm just saying that I don't think we're going to solve this problem with the ordinance, but I think we're going to create improvement on how we as a broad community look at this particular issue. Charisse? Okay, go ahead. Now, go ahead. I'm transitioning. Go ahead, Tammy.
That's okay. I just want to make what I think is an observation that needs to be recognized in all of this discussion. We're creating one island, right? That's the goal, one community and one island. So each time we take these steps in different directions for different groups, we have to be cognizant of how it impacts others. And as we say that, there has to be a realization and a recognition of the fact that, yes, the town of Hilton Head Island has particular ordinances. And then there's an overlay of additional covenants and requirements by those who live either behind the gates or within communities that have particular restrictions. And so when we think of one island and one community, we have to realize that whatever these noxious endeavors may be, however they end up being described, they really only impact a certain few. And so there must be a sensitivity to that because the burden is real for those that don't have those additional layers of protection to their quality of life that they bought and intended to to live out while they were part of this one island community that we're developing. So that's just a sensitivity and something that needs to be considered and understood as we move forward.
Yeah, Tammy, that's exactly why I'm pushing for a better understanding or definition of noxious activities. Because I agree with you. Some of these arise to a level that I think most people would agree would be unacceptable. So that's where I'm headed. But the other comment you made, it's a little bit of a chicken or egg. How do you create one community? And so it's simply saying one island, one community is a catchy phrase. But I asked the question, how do you create the one island, one community? And I'm not sure we're there yet.
Well, I think that's a worthy discussion and I certainly have far more than a catchy phrase to back up my my beliefs and definitions and view of how we get to quality of life for the island. But I'm happy to engage in that at any point on any level with whomever is interested. So, good question.
Thanks. Alex?
Yeah, you know, this this topic is it's real. And I guess this is why I continue to encourage us to have a community conversation about it and bring along the statistics to help us with the conversation. Because Councilwoman Becker is absolutely correct. There are folks that moved to Hilton Head for particular reasons. And maybe their their intent of moving here did not necessarily encompass some of the activities that were happening here before they got here, right? And the other side of that coin is exactly the same. There are folks that were here doing things before others moved here that had an expectation to continue to enjoy those throughout the generations to come. So we don't get to any type of compromise until we start to put everything on the table. And I think that's where we need to get to. And again, statistics to go along with it. Because in most cases, the recommendations are not suggesting that they're just irritating activities happening for no reason. There's a reason behind it. And in most cases, the reason is economics. So we have to have a conversation in that context, right? And the other part of the conversation that we have to be very realistic in is when you start to look at the stats, the number of Gullah-owned businesses that have gone down truly to preserve, if we're truly looking to have that as a part of our fabric and community, then the numbers don't lie. You know, if we were 10 yesterday and we're down to five now because of coal that's in front of us, then we're probably going in the wrong direction. But if we could do some things, and I don't know what those are at the moment, I know that compromise is a key component of it. If we could do some things to get us from 10 to 20, then I think we're going in the right direction. To me, that's the measurement. And if we work together, as Councilman Ames is suggesting, then I think we'll get there. But we have to be cognizant of what has been longstanding for centuries, in some cases, right? I mean, that has to, that has to weigh something in the conversation. And I think we've got a ways to go before we get there.
Alex? You know, in my mind, there's almost a truism that as density increases, personal freedoms decrease. The inverse relationship. So the flexibility that native islanders enjoyed when they were the, for all intents and purposes, the owners of the island is very different today for everybody who lives on the island because our population slash densities are increasing in ways that we are forced to do things differently. Walk across 278 didn't be, didn't used to be a life-threatening experience, you know? So our choices have to change. And so that's a part of the conversation that I think, as you say, has to be put on the table. But it does point out that if the flexibility on three acres of ground is now somewhat constrained by population growth, then is there an economic package that somehow inures to the benefit of both that owner and the broader community? And we've talked about transferable development rights, but I'm going beyond a simple ordinance that impacts the ground or land use on it. So those are just things that I think are a part of this complicated conversation. Glenn, anything you want to add to this erudite conversation?
I guess what I would say is this is indeed a complicated issue. It's a sociology issue. It's a density issue. It's an economic issue. But I agree that if we work together and are willing to compromise, I think we can come to a level of greater fairness for the benefit of all. And I look forward to being part of that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Charisse, so it's my understanding that at our second meeting in February, that staff will come forward and have further more detailed recommendations of where they think we ought to be headed. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Are there any final comments by the committee?
I want to reinforce and state my own deep feelings about the loss of our good friend. I got to know Scott best when I served on the CIP Committee. It's incredible how much information he had readily at hand to answer. He was deeply committed to this island, to this town, and we will sorely miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Committee business, I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to add, but I am reminded again and again that the DRB is looking for help regarding height, mass setbacks and buffers. And I think that's something that the Planning Commission and Public Planning Committee can weigh in on. And so I'm encouraging the staff to push that agenda forward. Thank you. Yes, Alex?
Mr. Chairman, under committee business, I'm just throwing this out for us to consider. I know we've talked a bit about the land planning effort in the 278 corridor. And we have asked staff to keep us apprised of that that effort. Maybe it's a question to the mayor if we could have that maybe sit on committee so that we are engaged and, you know, assured that the effort that the Oversight Committee and the third-party consultant are kind of working hand in hand with that land planning effort. You know, so that one doesn't get ahead of the other and it's somewhere where we can get, you know, up to date as it moves forward. Just a suggestion.
Are you suggesting that Public Planning Committee get reports or is more actively involved in some way?
I would ask that maybe we requisite the mayor to have that particular item set under Public Planning Committee.
And the committee
I'm not sure if that looks like a, on the staff report or unfinished business. I'm not quite sure what it looks like.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further, Tammy?
Just want to finish my thought from earlier when I lost my connection and relocated here. And in following up on David's words and Glenn's just now, it was with a heavy heart that I was going to express my condolences to the family of Scott Leggett and all of those who knew and loved him. And just real simple, to go back to a text that I wrote to someone in my family, trying to express how I was feeling yesterday, but that Scott was the most knowledgeable, sincere, thoughtful and smart people that I've known. And he'll be sorely missed by everyone. That's all. I just wanted to say it.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. And I'm sure his family will, when they hear about it. With no further business, the meeting is adjourned and thanks very much for your time.